I will officially call to order, meeting of the Oak Ridge Board of Education. If you'd please stand as Navy Junior ROTC Wildcat Company presents our colors and will lead us in the pledge to the flag. And you may be seated, thank you. Thank you each of you for being here tonight, much appreciated. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. McLean. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, please cast your vote. The agenda is approved unanimously. Next, we'll go to special reports and presentations. First item is our good news segment, and we'll start with Ms. Webb.
I have good news from Robertsville. The RMS 4H Club had three students who won a purple ribbon in the school speech competition. That placement allows them to advance to the county competition. Also, another 4H student won first place overall for the 7th grade in Anderson County for the chopped cooking contest. Robertsville Middle and Philadelphia Elementary united to compete or to complete a service project. During December, the gift club members worked with kindergarten students from Philadelphia Elementary School to provide Christmas gifts to residents of Lakewood Place in Loudoun. The younger students collected bottles of lotion while the older students collected socks and candy canes. Gift club members created handmade cards and packaged the lotion in the socks. Some of the kindergartners became Santa's helpers and delivered the gifts before Christmas. It was a great joint effort between the two schools and probably really adorable.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens.
I get to give the good news for Jefferson, at least half of it. Members of the Jefferson Middle School Band attended auditions for the annual ETSBOA Junior Band Clinic. All 10 students who auditioned made the clinic with five in the bronze band, two in the silver band, and three in the gold band. Congratulations goes to the Atomic Eagles, the Jefferson Middle School Master Builders, and the Radioactive Bricks. The teams competed in the Marble City Qualifier at Harden Valley High School on December 11, 2021. The Radioactive Bricks received the second-place Core Values Trophy and third-place Robot Performance Scope. The Jefferson Middle School Master Builders received the second-place Champions Trophy, and they will move on to the East Tennessee Regional Qualifier at Tennessee Tech on February 12th of this year, 2020, 2022. The Jefferson Middle School Spelling Bee was held on January 12th. Fifty-five students participated, and the bee went 23 rounds. 6th grader Vasch Patel won the competition with the word compassion. 8th grader Patrick Carrickis was the runner-up, and that's part of the news from Jefferson Middle School.
Thank you. Ms. McLean.
Okay, more from Jefferson. The 7th graders have been challenged to read 40 books this school year. This is a personal challenge with no tangible rewards attached. Reading is the reward. They keep track of the titles they read in a Reader's Notebook. So far, they have collectively read 1,782 books. The students have been challenged to step out of their comfort zone and read a genre that they typically do not read. JMS staff are proud of their progress and love seeing books in their hands throughout the day. Also, JMS Leadership in Action Award is dedicated to the JMS PLC team that exemplifies collaboration, reflection, and an intentional approach to their curriculum to best meet the needs of students. Mr. John Smith and Mr. Alex Goldberg are educators who work together and interdependently in collaborative teams to achieve common goals for which they are mutually accountable. This PLC is constantly trying out new innovative strategies to improve our student learning. They set clear objectives for students, structure their PLC time accordingly, foster a true friendship with like goals in mind, and focus on results. Additionally, their contributions frequently extend beyond their individual classrooms to include support for students in numerous after-school and extracurricular activities or student organizations. John and Alex understand the importance of continuing to build the positive culture at JMS, and that's some of the good news from Jefferson.
Ms. Agel.
From Oak Ridge High School, in 2018, Oak Ridge High School began a tradition of recognizing students that scored a 30 or higher on the ACT. A score of 30 or more represents the top 5% of students nationally. As of this day, Oak Ridge High School has a total of 42 seniors who earned their place in the 30-plus club. These students' pictures will be displayed in the lobby of Oak Ridge High School and were recognized at the January 21 basketball game. The Oak Ridge High School Technology Student Association placed in four of the five competitions they participated in in the East Tennessee TSA Regional Conference. The board game design team placed third, technology bowl team placed second, one student placed second in prepared speech, and children's stories team placed first in the regional competition. All teams who placed at regionals will go on to compete at state in April. Fifteen clinical intern students and 13 medical therapeutics were certified in CPR in December. Clinical intern students have resumed clinical rotations through the hospital and medical facilities in Oak Ridge. There were 27 HOSA members who competed in various categories for the regional conference, and 16 of those members placed in the top five in HOSA's regional competition. These 16 students will progress to our Tennessee HOSA State Conference in March 28th through 30th to compete in their events.
Continuing with Oak Ridge High School, eight Oak Ridge High School students earned a Microsoft Word certification in computer applications class. The Oak Ridge High School cybersecurity team placed second in state competition. Fourteen Oak Ridge High School students earned their college credit for statistics through dual enrollment. Seventy-one percent of students enrolled in statistics earned college credit. In December, 76 Oak Ridge High School students completed or competed in the statewide dual credit challenge exam in pre-calculus with a pass rate of 63%. The state average passing rate is 19% on the challenge exams. In addition, eight Oak Ridge High School students completed the statewide dual credit exam in statistics with a pass rate of 38%. Students who passed the challenge exam received free college credit that can be applied to any Tennessee public post-secondary institution. The Oak Ridge High School Band had 13 students earn chairs in the all-east senior clinic. One student made all-state on percussion for the third year in a row. And Oak Ridge High School Social Studies teacher Beverly Bowman has been named the 2021 Tennessee Economics Teacher of the Year by the Tennessee Council Economic and Free Enterprise Education at Middle Tennessee State University. And that's just some of the good news taking place in the Oak Ridge schools. Moving on, next is our volunteer recognition. I'll ask Dr. Reniger from Robertsville and Board Member Erin Webb to come to the podium to make tonight's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Philhauer. It is my honor, quite honestly, to be in front of you this evening, and it is my honor to accept this on behalf of Mr. Jake Greer. Mr. Greer is our PTSA president at Robertsville, and a little over a year ago, we had kind of an unexpected opening on our PTSA board, and Jake had done a number of volunteer items for us, and quite honestly, I was in a little bit of a pinch for a board member, and so I called Mr. Greer up out of the blue and said, "Jake, do you want to be the vice president?" And the good news is, you get to be the president next year. And so, Mr. Greer, if you know him at all, is incredibly gracious, incredibly humble, and has a servant's heart, volunteered to do so, and has done an amazing job, quite honestly, for and with our PTSA during the times in which we're living, and we're very grateful to him and his family. I will say, Mr. Greer is not able to be with us this evening. Recently, was involved in a preserious car accident and is recovering through that as his family, and I would just make a plea a little bit, and this was, this is not coming from the family, this is coming from me. You know, we've got a great community, he is a great community member, and there is a support page on our social media to help support the Greer family, and just encourage everybody to take a look at that and just help support them during this time. And again, mistakes from Mr. Greer earlier today, and just excited about the progress he's making, can't wait to get him back here in Oak Ridge with us, so, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll certainly keep that family in our thoughts and prayers. And Dr. Borchers, I'll turn the next item over to you, I think.
Absolutely. So, we all know that this is School Board Appreciation Week, and we've got a lot to be thankful for here in our district for sure with the school board that we have. I say often and wherever I can that I think we've got the best school board in the state, the country if you will, and I truly mean that. This board always makes decisions on what's best for students, and that is always at the center of that conversation. They are absolutely excellent at board governance, I've not seen any board do it better. So, at this time, I'm going to read a proclamation from our governor, and then we'll recognize our wonderful school board. Whereas an excellent public education system is key to our state's continued prosperity and success, ensuring the quality of life for Tennessee's communities and the economic development of the state, and school board members are diligently working to overcome the challenges of a changing world while providing students with the services and opportunities needed for a quality education. And school board members are committed to promoting and advocating for continuous improvement in student learning and represent a tremendous resource as local decision-makers, and our local school boards have demonstrated a strong commitment to quality public education by securing necessary resources, promoting academic standards, and fostering partnerships within communities. And school board members support and appreciate the efforts of students, educators, and administrators who diligently work to make sure that every student graduates high school prepared for college and the workplace, and the men and women of our local school boards are elected by the people to make decisions most appropriate for their communities and deserve recognition and thanks for their countless hours of service to public education in Tennessee. So, with that, I'd like our group to publicly thank our wonderful school board, our Board of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Borchers, and thank each of you. You all make our job very easy, to say the least. And I would add to what you just said, Dr. Borchers, it's an honor to work with the members of this board. They all serve for the right reasons, as you alluded to, and above all, we like each other. And that's a very important thing to say about boards of education, so thank you for that. Okay, from there, we move to our public forum. The public forum is for anyone who would like to address a topic that is not on the agenda. You may address a topic that is on the agenda when it is presented. At that time, please raise your hand to be recognized. If you choose to address the board, you will have three minutes to speak. The board may or may not respond to your comments, or may have the superintendent address your concerns. When you speak, if you would please come to the podium, sign in, and then state your name and address for the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll move next to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Please cast your vote. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Next, if I can find what I need, and I think I gave it to you. Next item, or under items for action, the first item is the extension of the superintendent's contract. I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval. Or second.
Well, motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. McLean. As you know, if you were here at our last meeting or watched or read the media, we had discussion of the superintendent's contract. The superintendent's contract is a four-year contract, but it can only be extended for one-year extensions, which what we're doing tonight. In front of me, I have a resolution to extend the contract of employment for superintendent of schools, Dr. Bruce Borchers. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion or comments from the board? Ms. Agel.
Dr. Borchers, we appreciate you. It is much easier to do the job that we have to do with you taking care of the administrative stuff as you do and bringing us the information we need to make the best decisions, so thank you.
And certainly, I made comments at the last meeting, but, and I know, Dr. Borchers, you would want me to do this as well. Leadership from a superintendent is exemplified by those who are members of his or her staff. So, we appreciate those members well, and we certainly appreciate your service, not only to public education in Oak Ridge, but to the community of Oak Ridge as well and what you do for that. And I would add by saying, each board member had the opportunity to meet with the superintendent, and each board member also evaluated the performance of the superintendent during the course of the last year. So, with all that being said, motion on the floor is to extend the contract of employment of the superintendent of schools by one year, making his employment effective until 2026 for four additional years. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item B. Item B is FY22 Budget Transfer Number Three. This is a second reading, Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY22 Budget Transfer Number Three.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers.
This is, as you said, a second reading with the bulk of this being additional funds for the track renovation, some CTE travel expenditures, building repairs and upgrades for cafeterias, and then required insurance for track construction and storage building at Oak Ridge High School.
Comments or questions? Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is item C, Purchase of Replacement Intercom System for Jefferson Middle School. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase and installation of a communication server and talkback gateways for Jefferson Middle School by Commercial Building Systems in the amount of $36,925.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
As you can see there from Mr. Thacker's memo, this system is over 30 years old and has experienced a significant systems failure, and like many things we bring before the board, due to the age of the equipment, parts are no longer available for this model, so we definitely need to have an intercom system in our school, so we're recommending that we replace that.
Comments or questions? Alan, would this be kind of like replacing carrier pigeons?
This system actually will be a basis for all of our district systems as well, so what's included in the price is a server that we'll be able to utilize from the main district system that we can actually pull and set individual units at all the different schools as they start to fail and be able to upgrade the whole district as steps allow.
Questions while Alan's here. Ms. McLean.
So, do we have a timeline of when it will be installed and ready to go?
My contractor said that they would be able to get the materials and equipment here within two to three weeks of approval.
Okay, Alan. Motion on the floor is purchase for replacement of the intercom system at Jefferson Middle. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, item D is Board Policy 6.415, Student Suicide Prevention. This is a first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 6.415, Student Suicide Prevention.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
I'm going to ask Dr. Williams to talk about this as she handled most of these changes.
First of all, I want to thank our counselors. They're doing an outstanding job identifying our students in crisis and responding to the ever-changing needs of our students during this time. And after meeting with our school counselors and reviewing the post-vention process and their concerns about that process, we made some revisions to the policy that allow counselors and administrators to better work with families and community agencies based upon the individual needs of the student.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. Motion is Board Policy 6.415, Student Suicide Prevention, first and second reading. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, FY23 Oak Ridge High School New Course Request. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the request for five new academic courses at Oak Ridge High School for the FY23 academic year.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? So move. Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
So, the board has that packet on this agenda item, and we have Ms. Roberts here if there are any questions about those five courses.
Comments or questions from the board? Ms. McLean.
So, would the board be allowed to attend one of these classes? The Detection Fiction and Mystery sounds like a fascinating class that would make English fun.
You're welcome anytime to come to Oak Ridge High School and visit any of our classes, absolutely, certainly.
But you'll also be required to pass if you go.
I can't promise there wouldn't be a pop quiz, just saying.
I'll stop in after I leave the World Mythology class. Maybe starring something here. And I know you, we talked about this, but I think just for the benefit of those who might be listening, and again, for board information as well, briefly, if you would, just kind of summarize how you go about coming up with new class recommendations, if you would.
Certainly. So, as we've moved to our block schedule, we found ourselves in a situation where students are accessing more courses before they finish high school. Now they have the opportunity to take 32 classes in those four years, so we found ourselves coming up dry for options for kids to take as they explore different avenues and different disciplines as they're in high school and explore even different careers. So, we found ourselves looking kind of short on our list of humanities electives, honestly. So, and there are some students who really wanted to access some more of the humanities courses, and so we've looked at where could we put things in that would be of high interest to students. So, for example, all students in Tennessee are required to take World History and Geography, but that curriculum no longer includes antiquities. So, we have some teachers at the high school who are bereaved by that and thought, "Well, that would be a great class," and it would marry nicely with our mythology course as students study those genres and because of all the allusions in current literature to mythological literature. So, those are some of the things that we talk about, like what's missing in our list of things that we offer at the high school to help our students be more rounded by the time they leave us, especially now that we have more options and opportunities for students.
Well, I think the board was in agreement as we talked about going to block scheduling that one of the benefits would be exactly what you just talked about, particularly in the area of humanities, to give these opportunities, so it's good to see that happening.
We're very excited.
Anyone else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion on the floor is Oak Ridge High School New Course Request. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move to items for information, Finance Report. Any comments or questions there? Hearing none. Move on to items for discussion. Old business? Any new business? Mr. Lay, no enrollment? Mr. Lay, no enrollment report tonight?
No, sir, we will hold it until next month, sir.
Very good. New business, communications, just an update on the calendar. Reminder to the board, if you haven't, you've got until January the 31st to file your disclosure statement with the state. If you haven't taken care of that, make sure you do so. Tomorrow, board members will have the opportunity to attend, beginning at 8:30, Principal's Data Meeting in this room. On the 26th, beginning at 8:45, we will be visiting Woodland. Moving then into February, before we have our next board meeting, board will be visiting on February the 23rd, Robertsville Middle School, and we will, we will be inviting members of City Council to attend that session with us to get a look at some of the things that have taken place to that building. And then on the 28th, I believe it is, the board will have its next board meeting. And a lot of other good things going on between now and then. Would remind the board, I did send you some dates to take a look at for Focus on Education. Ms. Agel has already picked her date, so that one is gone, so take a look at those dates, and we'll get you plugged in starting in February. In Communications, also, I'll share with you a letter that the board received. Dear members of the board, I deeply appreciate the compliment you have paid me in approving a motion to name the Jefferson Middle School Library in recognition of my principalship of the school. As I told the board on several occasions in person, the Oak Ridge Board of Education deserves a great deal of the credit for the invaluable repu-, inviable, sorry, reputation of our school system. I have particular reason to admire the support the board has given to the salaries and benefits of teachers. With that support, it was possible for us to hire almost all of the best teachers we interviewed during my twenty-six years as principal. Without your commitment, we could not have hired them, and without them, I could not have succeeded to the degree that I did. Sincerely, Robert Moss. And we'll look forward to the rescheduled dedication of that library in March. Correct? Great. Dr. Borchers, any other comments?
Not tonight, I think we're all right.
And Ms. Agel, it didn't come to haunt us when I said I thought we'd get finished a little early tonight. So thank each of you for your time, thank you for being here, board members, thank you. Travis, Dave, and Lynn, thank you all, as always, for your support and your help, and we stand adjourned.